City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1415. Today is the first of May 2023. It is 8:00 PM. Let us start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking at the agenda, will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
All right, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Sylvester.
I make a ma-
Oh, it's going.
I only need one motion.
I motion to excuse Councilmember Reginald Sylvester.
Excuse me, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that concludes item number one. Roll call, moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections to be made? All right, hearing none. That concludes item number two. Moving on to item number three, which is presentations. And we have one presentation today for Mr. Aaron Best Jr. I believe his family is here and his mother is here, so before we make this presentation, would his mother like to come up and say any words?
Yes.
About this achievement? You know your son best.
Thank you, everyone, for letting us come out today.
Podium, yeah.
I just want to share my excitement with you guys. Aaron Best, at the age of 11, he was able to help me build a digital health platform that had won a global contest through the Massachusetts Institution of Technology. Sorry, a little bit nervous, I didn't know I was gonna be doing this.
The Global Soph.
Yes, so it's an initiative through the MIT Soph program. And what it did was it allowed our solution to be scaled pretty quickly. But the magnificent thing about what Aaron did was during the COVID pandemic, him and his siblings were sent home. And he kind of helped me develop these processes through care planning and transfer of care. And it was amazing how he understood how to prototype and wireframe a platform, which people pay thousands and thousands of dollars for. And he was able to do that without training, did his own research, his own design. And it went on to be selected through NKU and St. Elizabeth Hospital. And it's been talked about and wrote about and just so many wonderful things. But because of his school schedule and, you know, we got a raise and everything like that, he has not been able to be involved in a lot of the different innovation and different opportunities that maybe he should have been. So I'm so thankful today that you guys are just able to just say, we recognize what your efforts are, and to kind of help him push forward as he is now 13, going to high school next year. So thank you so much.
All right, so on behalf of the City of Forest Park, Mr. Best, if you will come up here to the front, please. All right, so on behalf of the City of Forest Park, we have made this certificate in your honor. So this is a certificate of achievement, and we proudly present this to Mr. Aaron Best Jr. for outstanding achievement and mobile application development. So congratulations, young man. You're about as tall as me. All right, family, I know the family wants to come up. We can take a picture for the family.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Can I get one with you guys? I can take the camera up.
Jermaine, if you-
Jermaine, get some good pictures so I can post them. Get some good pictures so I can post them.
Absolutely.
Oh, that's good. I didn't think of that.
Everybody look at us. I can't see Mayor Brown. Thank you, Seth.
Stay there.
Mayor Brown, if you can scoot to your right, just like eight, six inches. There we go. Say, no, we can't see.
Say, y'all see me all the time.
And then stay there, please, and let me take one more. Thank you so much. Ready for you guys? Can I get one more with his mentor from Wynton Woods is here?
That's a big deal.
Yes, and if you guys could just stay with-
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much. Yes, I believe so. Thank you so much. That's real nice.
Thank you so much.
Any member of council would like to have any words of encouragement to the young man?
I'd like to start. First of all, congratulations on this honor. I have a couple of questions for you. First, where do you go to school again? What's that? When, when, when you say that, I want you to say loud and proud, right? Because, you know, bright minds come out of Wynton Woods.
Right.
And you're evident in that, okay? Second is, when you make it big, don't forget about us. No, but no, this is a high honor and it just really does my heart proud just to see what you have done. And I wish you all the success in the world going forward.
I'd like to say-
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sweeney.
Mr. Best, I just want to say congratulations. It does my heart proud to see a young African-American, young man, that took the stand that you took. I am so overjoyed for you. And thank you for being you. And thank you, Mom, you raising a fantastic child there. Congratulations.
So, Mr. Best, I'd like to echo the words of Councilwoman Denise Holt. And I also like to add this. As you grow, as you create, as you develop, as you learn, as you do the things that God has put in you to do, because see, that is a skill set that I will never have. That is embedded in you. You will have to always remember that whatever you do is more detrimental to you than it will ever be to anyone else. So today, you continue to stand tall. You continue to do the things that make you happy. You continue to grow, develop, create, make, be. In everything, in every way that your family has cultivated you to be, okay? Don't compromise. Don't settle. You're gonna get some foolishness. You're gonna see it. It surrounds you everywhere you go. But you are a leader. You are different. You are not like the other kids on the playground. Don't worry about nothing. Don't worry about nobody. You keep doing what you're doing. And I promise you, you remember this, my name is Trevina Adams, you remember this, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, if you stay focused on the path you are going now, those that may tease you, those that may not agree with you, those that may not support you, or whatever the case may be, they'll be asking you for a job one day. That's what they call it, facts.
Believe that.
I just want to say to Mr. Best and Ashley, I'm so excited regarding your vision and your innovation. And so just congratulations and just keep at it, and we wish you great success.
Yes, we're going down the line. Mr. Best, absolutely well done. So I have a special place in my heart for this because I own a STEM company. And so to see what you're doing and how long it takes us to teach even coding and electrical engineering and things like that from scratch, it is absolutely a gift from God, and you are well, well purposed. The other thing that I'm so proud of, and it's such a beauty to see, is that you've got a community of support. And this is what, this is what happens when community leans in. Mentor, as my grandfather said, mentors? The mentor, I mean, what, what, him being able to be there for you and covering you and your family and stuff like that. Don't stop looking for those folks that can help you as well, and make sure you're continuing to give back. I'm sure that you are going to continue this pathway, and you're going to be very successful. If you are looking for a STEM endorsement from the state of Ohio, we are experienced in doing that. We've got one lady that's at Northrop Grunman. She's making like $160,000 right out of college. And so the world is your oyster. You can have, you can do whatever you want with that skill set and that technology base. So reach out. Don't be afraid to ask people for additional resources. Even when you think you've tapped out, ask for some more. Because people are happy, happy to help you, and a community is standing behind you. I'm proud of you.
Okay, Mr. Best, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you can speak next. Mr. Best, first of all, this is a tremendous accomplishment. And I'm not just saying that. The fact that you entered this competition with your mother, the app itself is going to save lives. Plain and simple. I don't know if everyone understands the impact of what this application is going to do for just medical services, but ReAssist is on track to really changing how we do medical services. And the thing that I have to say to you is to be young, gifted, and black. It is incredible. It's an incredible responsibility, because you are a leader. If you had, you've had a lot of success very early, but I don't want you to rest on your laurels because you have talent. I want you to continue to reach for the stars. I want you to remember this moment and how it feels, and then think about the lives that you will undoubtedly impact in all of your work going forward, and continue to try. Continue to innovate. Imagine new futures for all of us, because your innovation, your mind, your brilliance, is what we're all counting on, essentially. You see all of these people up here? People who could all be considered accomplished in our own right? We all had mentors to push us. We all had moms who kept striving for greatness for us and praying for us, disciplining us when we needed it. But this accomplishment is going to have a ripple effect that none of us can see just yet, but we can see how bright and intelligent you are. So just remember to hold on to that as you move forward, especially in the STEM field, because other people need to see you. You are going to be a representation of what is possible, right? Always hold on to that fact. Fail early, fail often, but if you're not failing, you're not trying, and you had an early success, so I want you to continue to stretch yourself, right? And innovate, and imagine the new future that we all are going to live in ultimately. So congratulations again. Do you want to speak? Yeah.
So I got to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Adams was saying. The biblical principle that's involved, so if we open up our Bibles to Ephesians, Chapter 6, verses 1 through 3, says, "Children obey your parents and the Lord, for this is right, that it may go well with you and that you may live long in the land." He saw his mom working on a project. She had a need. He jumped in and assisted. That's what you're supposed to do as a child. That's what you're supposed to do. So I commend you for that. And I also want to say that a lot of students his age, they get a bad rap. I was talking to Dana about this in the back where, you know, they're all playing video games and they're lazy and they don't do nothing. No, this brother has a strong mind, very strong mind. And also, Ms. Trevina, she said that, you know, you help or hurt yourself the most. But as the mayor said, you're also a representative. Look at your family. Look at your school. Look at your community around you. You're a young lion, and you're a role model. So I just want to thank you.
So, Mr. Best, we don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything you would like to say? Would you please come to the podium? I love the way you walk with your head up.
I just want to thank everybody for thinking about me and honoring me for this and recognizing me for what I've done. And I enjoy being in places like this in front of people that do things like you guys do, and like, important people. Not that, important people, and especially people of color. And I feel like it's really inspiring to get honored by the mayor. And I want to thank all of my family and my mentor for coming out and supporting me.
It's like the parents are doing a good job. All right, that concludes item number three, presentations. Moving on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So if there's anyone who would like to come up and address council on any issue or anything that is on their mind? Say, don't everybody go at once?
Hello.
I want to make a motion. We, the Trotman family-
If you can just speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There should be a sign-in sheet up there also.
Okay.
Just state your name and then your address as well.
Okay. My name is Tammy Jackson, and my address is 2057 Wood Trail Drive, Fairfield, Ohio. And I'm here with my family, my two cousins. I would like to make a motion as we of the Trotman family will have a family reunion on July 26 of 2024. And we would like to have our cousins perform Zap Trotman, Roger Terry Trotman. And we would like to throw a concert here behind the high school here, or next year, to the public and for our family, if my cousins want to come up, please.
Hi, I'm Tanya Bradberry. I'm a resident of Forest Park.
Okay.
Graduate from Forest Park. Yeah.
And you didn't write your address?
My address is 11, do I need to tell it or speak it out for you?
If you just write it down, we'll get it, yeah.
Okay. And again, as my cousin Tammy was stating, we usually have a family reunion every two years. I guess back in 2017 or 2018, Zap, we did have them come to Hamilton. That's where we're from. And so I was just was trying to think of an idea, maybe them coming to Forest Park to see if that was-
Okay, well, that's exciting prospect. Normally, normally these, you don't have to come to council or make a motion. You can call the city and then you can request it through-
Is it the Recreation Department?
Yeah, it would be through Parks and Rec.
Okay.
That you can just make the recommendation. I mean, no, it's okay.
Happy to see you.
Makes us look good, yeah.
Now you have to stay for the whole meeting.
But yeah, you can just call Parks and Recreation and then tell them the date, and then which park you want to reserve or shelter and things like that, and then get the proper permitting from there.
Okay.
And then send us all invitations.
Got you.
And you need to start early because the spaces do fill up fast.
Yeah, and a T-shirt too. Send me a family reunion T-shirt. No, we cousins.
Okay, yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, if you come to the podium?
Oh, 11246. Lodge View. So as far as, I was having like an idea of how we usually have Jazz in the Park, to have it over there at the high school. I'm not sure if we will be able to have like vendors. That would be a permit-based thing that we would need personally.
Yeah, you would get proper permitting. You can have a, you know, pretty big party. Just reserve the park, the shelter. Tell them everything that the reunion would entail. If you wanted, you know, food trucks, because we have these type of activities in the park all the time. And then you just have to provide the, I mean, fill out the proper city registration. It would just require a permit. The park that's next to it is ours.
It's a site.
Yeah, yeah. Central Park, yes. And we love activity in our parks.
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna talk for your next CR days.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, do we have any other communications from the public at this time? All right, hearing none. We're going to close item number four on the agenda. Move on to item number five, which is the reports from standing committees. So we're going to go to Councilmember Adams.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report that the Beautification Committee that I chair, we've been, we've asked Councilmember Harrison to come. He has graciously accepted our invite. Purpose of that meeting is just so he can give us a little bit more information about Human Resource Commission and how that works in an effort to expand our membership for the Beautification Committee. If there are any members either on Waycross Live or in our audience that would like to participate in the Beautification Committee, we would absolutely love to have you. And that concludes pretty much my report for now. Oh, Arbor Day. Arbor Day went really well. The mayor did show up. Yeah, the mayor did show up. Unfortunately, I was at work. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, for attending Arbor Day. I understand that was a really good presentation, and so I just want to thank you on behalf of the Beautification Committee for your presence, your time, and also for the city, for those residents who did attend.
Absolutely. Also, at this point, we're kind of getting into the weeds. So if anyone would like to stay, you are more than welcome, but you do not have to stay for the rest of council as we go over council business. It can get boring, but it can also be exciting at times, so.
And since it's still my turn, congratulations again, Mr. Aaron Best.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, absolutely. Arbor Day was really nice. The breakfast that was had afterwards was really nice and building community as well. And so we certainly thank, we thank all those that worked very tirelessly in making that happen. Mayor Brown did an excellent job on that, with the dedication in front of our new Ninja Park. I have an update on our summer youth programming. And we were fortunate enough to have several of our faith organizations be in attendance. And so the charge for the public, in given context, a few weeks ago, was in creating a space for students, whether they were elementary, middle school, or high school students, so that it was a safe space, a place that they could enjoy themselves, that was free, and hopefully at least four hours to six hours long. And I asked all those churches to at least try to do two events or programs this summer, because we almost have somewhat of a decentralized recreational center, right? We've got a lot of churches that have a lot of large spaces. And they have a lot of skills and volunteers that we need to engage and plug into the community and the kids learn from. And so we had Pastor Kabamba from Forest Chapel, we had Pastor Ben, and Mark from Red Door, Pastor Barnes, Kemper Road Christian Church, Mark Upton from John Wesley, Pastor Covington, Dr. Reverend Covington from Quinn Chapel, Pastor Jay from Espirito Santos, and Pastor Sutherland from Victorious Church, and Pastor Chad from City Gate. And as we went along with these meetings, we were able to develop some programs from June through August. So far, there's, there are 19 of those programs that will, that will be scattered amongst the summer so that our kids will have some summer, some free summer programming. The listing on that will come out in a couple of days, but we're talking about disc golf clinics. We've got gardening, baking, cooking, woodworking classes, sewing classes, and things like that, to give you an idea. The program, or our meeting went so well that we are also going to be doing a Saturday, May 13th, Forest Park Summer Youth Programming Event. It will be held at Quinn Chapel. And it's not sponsored by the city, but it is, it is for Forest Park residents and that want to learn, so families can come out to learn more about how they can register and get their kids involved with these free summer activities.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Just as a point of clarification, these are not city-sponsored events or not city-endorsed events, but we are just, you were just giving a report on events that happen to be happening through different institutions and organizations in the City of Forest Park.
Absolutely.
We have not put up any money or anything like that?
No, we have, we're not paying. The city is not paying for anything.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that. We do always want to publicize any activity that is happening in the city, though. All right, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
I'm sorry, I would like to add something to the work session.
Yeah.
So a few months back, we had a presentation from Parks and Rec. And there were some, there are quite a few things that we asked for collectively. We wanted to see some, you know, certainly some more quantitative data with how that program, how our programs are developing, maturing, and how they're going to maintain, sustain those programs, and then really get that feedback and the data so that we can better make sure that we are connecting families to sporting events, whether that's coaching and things like that. You know, we're out in the community and we hear things, you're at a cookout somewhere and you hear like, hey, you know, this was our experience. And several people talking about the experiences that they've had with our Parks and Rec. I think we need to be really mindful that this is, this is the feeding. This is how they're getting into our schools. Or sometimes kids can't quite, you know, make those teams. And so this is really where that community and fabric is being built, in those relationships. And so I'm not saying that we don't hold our Parks and Rec in high esteem, because they certainly work hard and certainly do, but the mechanics and the processes have got to be on point, because we're losing kids and we're losing families from engagement. And so I would love to see the follow-up from that. I'd like to see that in some clear data. And I'd like to see where the pivots are based on that data that we're getting back. And then also, what does the entire timeline look like from January 1 through December 31st for all leagues? And what that looks like. We have to have coaches, coaches' meetings and things like that. Just wanting to make sure that those processes are nice and buttoned up.
Okay, just, so I'm clear. All program data for the city, the actual city events, so the sporting events, we want to make a report on this from Parks and Recreation, correct?
Correct. And it should be a follow-up as well. In addition to that, it should be a follow-up from those things that were presented, and there were some specific points that we had. Like if we're going to have a goal, then is that a membership increase goal? Is that a coach increase goal? What are the dollars that were associated with those goals? All that needs to be in a format so that we can, we can kind of digest that.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. All right, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the residents of Forest Park. One great thing about Forest Park that I love to champion and talk about our great city is our diversity. So May, for those who may or may not know, May is recognized as Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, okay? So why the month of May? Well, it goes back when this was voted into legislation back in 1992. Historically, the month of May is recognized as when the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May 7th, excuse me, 1842, okay, or 1843. And also to the significant contributions of Chinese immigrants to the- Okay, or eighteen forty-three. And also to the significant contributions of Chinese immigrants to the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine. So for our residents of Forest Park, who may be of, um, Asian-American and Pacific Islander heritage or descent, excuse me, this is your month. We recognize that. On, uh, City Council, excuse me, for the, um, human resources, we do have three residents, uh, who will be interviewed shortly for vacancies within, um, on the various boards in the city. So once again, for our residents, if you'd like to get involved, we do have vacancies on these boards. So all we ask is that you submit an application, uh, through the city, and we will interview you, okay? Finally, I know last Saturday, the twenty-ninth of April, uh, we officially dedicated our new Ninja Warrior course, okay? Um, after news cameras left and after a lot of people on council, you know, left, I tried it out. So I, I didn't break any, break any bones or anything like that. Um, but it was very nice just to see how many people came out for it. And I came back later with my son, and more people were just showing up throughout the day. And he wanted to go back yesterday, but it started to rain. He was kind of upset about it. So, um, kudos, uh, to all those who helped get this, this, um, you know, the new Ninja Warrior, uh, structures in place. Um, it's, I heard nothing but great things about it from the residents. Uh, the kids seemed to enjoy it. Um, so, hey, keep up the awesome work. And then for work session, um, I do ran across an article, and I think we should get on board with this. So a few months ago, and this has been in news lately, about the thefts of, uh, Kia's and Hyundai's where people break in and, you know, use a USB, um, something just to break into these vehicles. But anyway, uh, Hyundai has been giving away, um, wheel locks. So you can put on your steering wheel, and they've been doing that through local police departments. So I'm hoping that we can get with our Forest Park Police Department and see how we can get some of these vehicle locks for our residents, because that's how they distribute these, um, wheel locks, but to the residents of our community. So it's, it's something that I guess our police have to.
I can get you an update on that. That actually is in the works.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, good.
That's already in the works.
Okay. All right, well, I have nothing else then, but thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Does anybody have any questions? All right, moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
Hi, I do not have a report, but I did go to the, the Ninja Playground. I did not try it out. I didn't, I didn't want to break a bone, so I didn't try it out, but it's, I, I really liked it. It's really great. And I understand that they're going to add more to it, to make it the largest one in the vicinity. So kudos to Parks and Rec for that.
Okay.
That would conclude my, um, discussion, and I don't have anything for the work session.
All right, thank you for that, uh, First Vice Mayor. Moving on to Second, Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
All right, thank you for that. Dr. Moore, do you have anything to report for the work session?
No, do not.
All right, thank you. And that concludes item number five, reports from standing committees.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, at the time that I had given my report, we had transitioned with our, uh, guests leaving the room. I did not get a chance to.
Oh, yes, if you would like to add anything.
I've asked if I had any items for work session.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'd like to talk about, um, possibly increasing the, uh, participation, uh, number for the Beautification Committee.
Okay.
Um, the Beautification Committee, uh, has a, a group of dedicated, mature residents, and they're wanting to kind of open up membership, but yet still be involved, um, in an effort to hopefully bring in some, um, new blood and, uh, some new energy into the commission. So I'd like to know if we can talk about that, please, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we do need to have a discussion about a few of our commissions. So thank you for, uh, bringing that up. All right, moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. Um, and just to echo everyone's sentiments, um, so Arbor Day was on the twenty-eighth. Uh, the city of Forest Park is a tree city, so in commemoration of Arbor Day in our Central Park, uh, we actually always plant a tree. Uh, we take our status as a tree city very seriously. Uh, we know trees add to the character and fabric of the community. They're very beautiful. They help with climate change. Um, and every year, uh, we go out to the park, uh, Beautification Committee gets a tree, and then Public Works, uh, helps us plant it, and the city makes a proclamation. So I did read out, uh, a proclamation, uh, denoting our status as a, a tree city and commemorating Arbor Day once again, and that was a really good event. Um, so thank you for everyone who was in attendance. And then, uh, Saturday, uh, we actually did have the ribbon-cutting ceremony for our Ninja Warrior Playground. Um, so thank you to all of the residents who came out. Uh, it was well-attended. There were kids, uh, trying to do the course. It, it just was a beautiful sight to see. This is exactly, um, uh, the type of community that we want to be. Communities that provide amenities for our residents, amenities that our residents, uh, like to use. So we do want to thank our city staff, our Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as, uh, Playground Equipment Services, uh, for, um, the design and layout, and then Public Works for installation, Parks and Recreation for the planning. It was really a community effort, um, and residents loved it. So, um, I'll probably get out there myself, uh, not too long to do the course. Uh, we actually did have a resident who is a Green Hills resident, I believe, um, do the course. He was on American Ninja Warrior, so he came out, and the media was in attendance as well, uh, as well as our state representative, Jessica Miranda. So, uh, it was just really, uh, fun times all around for everyone. Um, but, uh, residents should be aware that we are going to continue to make updates to that park. So if you like that, you know, just stay tuned, because we have a lot more coming. In addition to that, um, as an update, I actually did attend the African-American Mayor's Convention in Washington, D.C., um, two weeks ago now. And I met the Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris. Uh, so she knows about Forest Park, so we are on the map. She actually gave me a parting gift, and we had a, uh, we had a really good time. I met mayors from all over the country. Uh, a lot of different ideas were shared, a lot of networking. I also spoke to a, a number of federal agencies about, uh, grants that we can apply for. Uh, the city of Forest Park, uh, we take pride in, um, being innovative and, and bringing resources to the community. So we look at things like grants, and we do apply for them. We're actually in the middle of a, a grant now, Doc. So thank you for that, Dr. Moore, uh, for, um, we're applying to Interact for Health, but the Department of Transportation has a, a number of grants that can go to making improvements to our roads, um, and adding bike lanes and a, a number of different things. So please stay tuned. Um, your city is working on your behalf, as well as the Department of Commerce. Uh, there are a few grants that we're going to apply for, and we're applicable, I mean, we're, um, eligible for there as well. And that is my D.C. update. Uh, in addition to that, the city of Forest Park is having a tax town hall. So on May eleventh, so that is, um, next week, Thursday, May eleventh, at seven P.M. in our senior center, the City of Forest Park. Uh, we hear you. We hear residents' complaints. A lot of people talk about taxes. So, uh, we did a lot of research. We wanted to find out exactly where the disconnect was. We're going to explain the difference between property taxes and income taxes. And we will also bring a number of county offices out to Forest Park to explain their role in the tax process, the tax assessment and collection process. So, uh, Hamilton County Auditor Bridget Kelly will be in attendance, as well as, uh, Hamilton County Treasurer, um, Jill Schiller. She is sending a staff member from her office. So residents that have ever thought about taxes or have questions, um, we are trying to, um, remediate the confusion. Uh, so people, please come out, uh, May eleventh for the Forest Park Tax Town Hall. This is a first in the city's history, but it should be, uh, a very informative and candid discussion about taxes in Forest Park. And with that, that concludes my report. Um, and I do not have anything to add to the work session at this time. So we're going to move on to item number seven, uh, to the City Manager's Report, and we have, uh, our Assistant City Manager, uh, Mr. Andy Levandowski.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we, I guess, piggybacking on the thefts of the Kia's and Hyundai, I've been talking to the Chief Arns about this for a few months. And it's, it's a couple of different things going into that. They've been trying to get in contact with how do they get them, and it's, it's a lot of red tape to go through. And then on top of that, there was a, not a lot of these produced anymore, because most cars didn't require them anymore. Uh, most cars are keyless, and most cars, so there, there's a lot that went into them. So they, so Honda and Kia kind of ramped up production on those, and they're, they finally got in contact with the right people, and I know that we're going to be getting them, so. Um, I'll, but I'm going to get, uh, the police chief to give me a report on that for the next meeting. And then yard sale, um, is this Saturday? Over eighty households have registered, um, and it goes from eight to four. So far, right now, the weather looks pretty good, I think, so fingers crossed. Composting Seminar at the Senior Center this Thursday at six-thirty. Um, over sixty people have registered. If you still want to register, I think you'd be, you can go to the environmental, um, website, uh, Forest Park, and it'll link you to the county, and you can register, because they're the ones putting it on. A big thing going on right now is the aggregation update. Um, as you know, we passed aggregation three or four years ago. Wright Gwen, our environmental awareness, he's worked diligently with our aggregation consultants to secure the best rates for electric within the last three years and, and moving forward. The goals of the program are to stabilize the costs, um, for the residents and reduce the energy bills for residents and small businesses. The previous three-year contract with Constellation Energy saved, uh, the community as a whole over one million, and an average household of over three hundred dollars a year. Uh, it was at a cost of four point five cents a kilowatt hour. Um, that contract is up, and unfortunately, the prices are going up. Um, so, but it's still, the, the program is still going to be a huge and overwhelming success, because the current constellation ends in May. Our new two-year contract we just signed with Energy Harbors is a fixed rate of six and a half cents a kilowatt. It is an increase, but Duke has already announced that they plan to be a nine to ten cents per kilowatt hour by June or July. So it will still be a huge savings for the residents. Over seventy percent of residents participated in the last contract, and residents can opt in and out as often as they would like. There is no fee. Um, so if you think, or if, if Duke Energy does reduce, you can always get out. So that's the energy aggregation update. The chipper program will be next week, um, so that, I believe, right, yeah, yeah, it's starting next week. So please have your items out the day before your scheduled day. Um, if you have any questions, you can call the, the Public Works Department. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Duke. Does anyone have any questions for our Assistant City Manager?
It's not so much a question for the City Manager, but as we talk about, uh, energy and energy bills, I just want the community and the city to know that there is an additional program called Share the Light Fund that, um, is helping residents pay, uh, their Duke bill. And if you go online and just look up Share the Light Fund, I'm sorry, I don't have the phone number, um, but they are able to assist you. I know, uh, their turnaround time is like probably within five days, being able to take your application, get you processed, put a pledge on your, uh, Duke bill so that you don't possibly avoid any disconnections or whatnot, but it is called Share the Light Fund. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andy.
No problem.
Yes, ma'am. Share the Light, L-I-G-H-T, Fund. It is through Duke Energy.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, and that concludes item number seven. Moving on to item number eight, which is our other reports. Uh, so we're going to start with our Law Director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I recently assisted the Police Department with respect to what I consider a, a vague and burdensome request for body camera video from a First Amendment auditor. That was, in my mind, resolved back at, uh, April twenty-five. Haven't heard back from them, so that's still up in the air, I guess. Also, uh, I did send the proposed amendment you'll read tonight regarding the texting and driving, and also reviewed an issue on the, uh, Waycross Development Agreement that has been completed and signed. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless there are any questions.
Thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for our Law Director? All right, thank you for that, John. Moving on to our Clerk of Council, Ms. Kaya Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three and twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three, and Resolutions Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three through twenty dash twenty-twenty-three were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, moving past.
I just have one, um.
Yeah.
Correction on, um, Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three, Section Two.
One correction.
If you read the first line, under Section Two, you don't see it. It's existin', existin'.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just a minor typo.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, um, so that concludes item number eight on the agenda, other reports. Uh, moving past item number nine, which is unfinished business, to item number ten, which is new business. I need a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only. Ordinance numbers twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three and twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that these ordinance, ordinances were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please, uh, call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes. Uh, will the clerk please read Ordinance Number twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance Number twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Amending Forest Park Code of Ordinance seventy-two point ninety-one.
Okay. I move that we adopt Ordinance Number twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
I, I think that's just our first reading.
Is it our first reading? It is. This would be our first reading, so this was, there's no vote on this one.
Yeah, that's not even, we don't have it in the proposal to be.
Okay, so we just got to read it.
Yeah, because this is, this is the new ordinance about texting and driving. Yeah, so this is our first, so we will not vote on this tonight. All right, uh, but it doesn't have to be written full, because we suspended the rules, correct?
It's correct.
All right. Uh, will the clerk please read Ordinance Number twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three by title only?
Ordinance Number twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three, An Ordinance Amending Appropriation for Current Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Forest Park, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Uh, is there a motion, uh, First Vice Mayor Holt?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, yeah, this is appropriations, um.
Yes, this can be voted on, right, it's appropriations.
Yeah. So is there a second? Oh, you seconded? Sorry about that. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Um, you kind of caught me off guard on this one.
Yeah, uh, point of order, I'm not seeing, um, number twenty-nine in our packet, actually.
I don't either, yeah.
Can I get it?
And, and you don't have it either?
I don't have it, but I can give, I mean, it's.
If you can give a, if you can just give a brief synopsis on this, Andy.
Yes, this is just a, it's a general thing we do every now and then if we have to appropriate more money. The biggest part of this is the CIB loan. We have to budget, uh, to accept, uh, or to expense it. Um, but like we've talked about earlier, the, we won't be, the city's not out any money. This is, um, financing for the Waycross Community, or Waycross, uh, new housing development. That's the majority of it. I think it's like four point three million dollars in that. And then the rest of it is just, um, furniture and some I.T. stuff, and then a couple of little contracts, but that's about it.
All right.
I'm sorry, um, Acting City Manager, can you please repeat that last part? Um, I, I didn't hear you completely.
Oh, sure. Uh, well, it's, the CIB loan is the biggest part, and then there's some I.T. projects, like, um, and then some furniture. Um, and then there is a contract for, uh, for some economic development services that we already contract with Montrose, that we're actually extend, or, um, elevating that contract to help out in the absence of an Economic Development Director. So that's the, the, the last thing that I believe that's in that.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the I.T. projects and the furniture?
So furniture is, um, there's a couple of new hires downstairs in the Building Department, so there's, uh, we're getting furniture for them, uh, for building, inspectors building, and they'll be doing some property maintenance as well. Um, and then I think the City Manager has some furniture in there as well.
Yeah, they need some.
Yeah. All right, thank you for that. Uh, does anybody else have any further question? Uh, does anybody else have any further questions for Andy?
That was for the furniture, did you speak on the IT?
Yeah, the IT was a, it was, I think it was only like nine thousand dollars for spyglass, um, she told me. The spyglass, they did an audit of, of all of our connections, I think, through, um, cell phones and, uh, her, her internet connections and find out, and they, they found a lot of like, we were getting charged for things that we weren't utilizing. So they, you pay for it the first year, but then you see the savings in the future years. So it was to the tune of, uh, like eight or nine thousand dollars a year we'll save after the first year.
And how much is that IT project altogether? Do you have a guesstimate?
I think it was around nine thousand dollars.
So it's nine thousand a year, so it's saving us nine thousand, but we're spending nine thousand?
Just for the first year, because they charge you for what they, for what they find, and then going forward is your savings.
And how long is this, what is the duration of this agreement or plan?
It's just, it was, I think if they do it just this year and then going forward, they help you cancel it as well and things like that. But after that, um, it's, we just see the savings, because we're not spending money on things we're not using anymore.
Alright, at this point, we have to close the discussion. Will the Clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adams?
I'd like more clarification, um, on that. I'm not understanding the nine thousand dollars upfront, and then we're saving nine thousand dollars. And then the duration, I, I'm not understanding that, so I'm, I'm struggling with voting for that or agreeing to that. I don't know if Mr. Wykoff can offer me some understanding, but I'm struggling with that.
Well, I can only echo what, uh, our Assistant City Manager just said. This is a service company that came into the city, charged us approximately nine thousand dollars for their consulting recommendations. Those recommendations will live in perpetuity. Every year, we will save eight or nine thousand dollars, but we only pay the consultant one time. So, we recover the expense the first year we've canceled these programs, and then every year after that, we're actually saving the eight or nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so may I, well, for the purpose of, I will abstain from a vote.
You can't abstain, it's either yes or no, you...
No.
Brown?
Yes. Alright, ordinance Number twenty-nine passes, um, five, one. Alright, uh, I need another motion to suspend.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring to read, to, uh, requiring the reading in full and re-Resolution Numbers eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three through twenty dash twenty-twenty-three by title only.
It's been, was there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Alright, thank you for that. Will the Clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Alright, motion to suspend passes. Uh, will the Clerk please read Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three by title only?
Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution declaring a moratorium on the, I'm sorry, on new group living facilities.
Alright, is there a motion, Council Member, uh, First Vice Mayor Holt?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
This, a mora, a moratorium is hereby declared on applications for new group living facilities in the City of Forest Park, and the Zonin Administrator has been directed to refuse any such applications while this moratorium remains in effect. The moratorium should be in effect until one hundred and eighty days after the date when one of the five existing group living facilities in the city is certified as no longer in operation by the Zonin Administrator, or when the number of single-family dwelling units in the city exceeds six thousand, whichever occurs first. And with that, I would urge adoption or passage of Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three.
Alright, thank you for that, First Vice Mayor. Will the Clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Clark?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
Alright, Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three passes, uh, I guess, four, two. Alright, moving on, um, to Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three, uh, will the Clerk please read that by title only?
Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three, accepting the bid of Rack and Baller for the twenty-twenty-three street program.
Alright, is there a motion, uh, First Vice Mayor Holt?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
That this was posted six days prior to the meeting, and, uh, oh. Okay, this is a bid for, accepting the bid of Rack and Ball, Baller, for the twenty-twenty-three street program at a cost of six hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cent. With that, I urge adoption of Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three.
Alright, will the Clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Moore?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Alright, Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three passes six, zero. And, um, will the Clerk please read Resolution Number twenty dash twenty-twenty-three by title only?
Resolution Number twenty dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to apply for the Hamilton County Public Health Community Mini Grant in the event that the city receives the grant from Hamilton County Public Health, and authorizing the City Manager to sign any agreements necessary to obtain and release funds.
Thank you for that, Takiya. Is there a motion, uh, First Vice Mayor Holt?
If you don't mind, since this has to do with We Thrive, can, uh, count, uh...
Is there a motion, uh, Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution Number twenty dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, just no, we're just very thankful for Hamilton, um, County Public Health and for this partnership, and so I urge adoption.
Alright, will the Clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Alright, Resolution Number twenty dash twenty-twenty-three passes six, zero. Alright, and that concludes all of our new business, so is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, council meeting is adjourned.